Hey, how's it going?
Sorry I was gone last month. I tried really hard to be here, but...
You missed the conversation on distilleries and breweries,
Oh, no, I watched the meeting.
Which much of us think it's a really good idea.
Yeah, I know, I know, I watched the meeting, so I saw it.
Because I've seen some great facilities, I mean, you know, goes to Bellingham. I just think it's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, but John pretty much brought up what I would have brought up about the breweries and the Connor, you and John, I think with the...
Well, I think we should do, I think we should do a field trip.
Yeah, of course.
I was thinking more like Kenmore and Woodville.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be up for that. Of course, now, I'm exploring the, what Vernon has to offer as its newest employee, so...
You're working at Mount Vernon now?
Yeah.
Nice. What are you doing over there?
No, I, I mean, I, uh...
It's a balance for you.
Yeah, I'm happy to stay on, I just don't, I, the reality is...
When did you start doing that?
Uh, July 25th.
Oh, so a few months.
You bring a lot to the table, by the way, because you've had experiences...
So I just started the recording, John.
I don't know where you're at, buddy. I'm right here. We just got this whole side held down over here. Yes, we're gonna tip the boat.
I'm suggesting I say nothing untoward.
Okay.
I was gonna mention that, you know, before you pass the agenda, that the one, number two, we're not gonna have because of the administrative error.
Okay.
So, mention that before you pass the agenda.
Okay.
Administrative error, okay.
Okay, I will call the meeting of the Cedar Woolley Planning Commission to order at 6:30 PM on the 20th of September 2022. Bill, are we fine online? I'm sorry.
Yes, we're recording now.
Okay, thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, on to our roll call. Commissioner Huggins, are you online? Absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Present. Commissioner Freiburger?
Present.
Commissioner Maddox?
Present.
Commissioner Fatizzi, present. Commissioner Fornetta, you online? Commissioner Fornetta, absent, and Commissioner Penno, I know, is absent. So, on to the consent agenda of the minutes from the August 16th, 2022 meeting. Has everybody had the ability to read it? And do we have any comments regarding the document? I don't have anything myself.
I wasn't here, so...
I have no changes or suggestions.
Commissioner Freiburger?
If I can find it.
If you can find it.
I just wanted to ask a question. I did listen to the meeting, but in item number two, that first sentence, Mr. Coleman described the definition of live work for the commissioners and gave a brief description of how live work is different than mixed commercial and fire requirements, and pointed out that currently, I just wasn't quite sure the mixed commercial and fire requirements, what that meant, so...
Well, as far as the minutes go, that is, that is accurate.
Okay. That's all I need to know, so, no wishy...
We can talk about what, you know, what was discussed, since you are curious about what the differences are.
Yeah, I did listen to the meeting, I just wasn't quite sure at the, yeah.
Okay, at this point, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the, to approve the meeting minutes of August 16th, 2022?
I so move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Freiburger. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Johnson. Do we have any further discussion? Guess not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries with no amendments. So, on to the general public comments section, and let me just read a little bit of disclosure here. If anyone wishes to speak, please limit comments to three minutes or less. Comments may also be submitted via email or mail ahead of the hearing, ahead of the meeting, and read into the record. The instructions to submit comments are published prior to planning commission meetings on the monthly planning commission agenda. If anyone would like to speak online or in person, please state your name, address, or any group or organization that you represent. So, at this point, do we have any emails or mail that needs to be read into the record?
We have not, staff's not received any emails or mail.
Okay. Do we have any audience members wishing to speak? Sir? Would you like to speak? Okay. Do we have anyone online wishing to speak? I guess not. So, a little point of correction here, I apologize. The opening time for the public comments section was at 6:33. I will now close the general comments section at 6:34. We have no public hearings scheduled for tonight, and we do have unfinished business. Number one, possible amendments to Title, I'm sorry, to Title 17 SWMC to address retail uses associated with breweries, distilleries, and wineries in the industrial and commercial zones. And item two, possible amendments to SWMC 17.04.030, definition to live and work. So, I would like to put into the record now. Item number two, we will just scratch until the next meeting because we did not have a memo available at this time to address item number two. Is that correct?
So, yeah, so to clarify, on the published agenda, there were three items, two unfinished business and one new business. The first unfinished business is the possible amendments to Cedar Woolley Municipal, Title 17 of the municipal code to address retail uses associated breweries, distilleries, wineries, and industrial, in the industrial and commercial zones. There was also, on the published agenda, possible amendments to Cedar Woolley Municipal Code 1704.030, definitions to define live work unit. There was an administrative error with the, the live work unit memo that was published, so instead of trying to rectify it at the last minute, we're just gonna take number two off of the agenda. And then, that will also leave the new business, requested amendments to the accessory dwelling unit regulations in Chapter 17, 100 of the municipal code to address ADUs, respect built homes. That is still on the agenda. And will go directly after the unfinished business, which is the breweries, distilleries, and wineries discussion, which I believe is where we're at now.
Thank you, take it from there.
You want to do it?
So, we're gonna be working off of the September 20, 2022 memo, right?
Correct.
With the subject, it's kind of a mouthful, but I don't think I need to read that into the record. Basically, it's amendments to SWMC 1704.030 to define and such. So, have at it, Nicole, thank you.
Okay, so, last time we talked about this, we talked about this back on August 16th. The planning commission had started reviewing the first draft of amendments, and we already recommended a couple of edits, such as excluding the alcohol-serving establishment specifically from the definition of alcohol production establishment, for clarification, and then specifying that alcoholic beverage and/or food service may be included accessory to alcohol production establishments. And then, planning commission was tasked with researching the topic a little bit more in depth for discussion and to provide any kind of recommendations to this definition, so... If you take a look in the definition 1704.030, you'll see that I've included, in the definition, it now reads, alcohol production establishment means a business involved with the manufacturing, bottling, warehousing, and distribution of alcoholic beverages, excluding alcohol service, serving establishments, and specifically including breweries, distilleries, and wineries. Food and/or alcoholic beverage service may be allowed accessory to such establishments. If we go further down in the permitted uses, number six there, I've just...
This is in specific zones, right?
So, this is permitted uses in the mixed commercial zone specifically. So, I've just added to that permitted use there, the alcoholic beverage and/or food service may be included accessory to such establishment. And I've just kind of repeated that for the, for the central business district conditional use, alcoholic production establishments, and repeated that again for the industrial zone permitted use there. And that's essentially the only change I've made, so... That we can open up for discussion. Is there anything planning commission finds that we should add, change, remove?
I believe I remember we, we had some discussion on the square footage for the alcohol production facilities, and we used the room as an example, our council chambers here, as an example, that's almost approximately 2,000 square feet. So, I believe some of us might want to revisit that particular item and have maybe additional comments on it, Commissioner Johnson?
Well, something that I was thinking about since our last discussion on this is, and I don't know the legality, legalities of this, so it may be something that we would have to research more in depth, but, you know, particularly with breweries, you know, breweries are usually gauged by, you know, how many barrels a brew house can, can brew at any one time. So, you got, you know, one barrel, three barrel, five barrel, 10 barrel. And I know from my own research that when you get above, I think it's 10 barrels, a 10-barrel brew house, you've kind of jumped up to the next level from just like in-house, limited distribution, but mostly just pouring on your own kind of establishment, to now you're really going more, you know, more industrial, you know. You're, you may have like the, the element of like an actual tap house, you know, for drinking and eating, but, you know, you've, you've kind of jumped beyond that to the next level. So, something that I was kind of chewing on, and to gain my point of where we, we may need to research it unless you know off the top of your head is, is there a way to maybe limit, like can we restrict within certain zones the size of like a brew house? Because that would be self-limiting unto itself, and then you don't have to necessarily worry about the square footage of a facility. Because if someone wanted to, you know, have, I got, just taking like the Woolly Market, for example, I mean, it's a large facility, but, you know, it has multi-functions or the capability of multi-functions. And I don't know if, you know, if you were to just throw a brew house in there, it would be immediately restricted by the square footage. But, at the same time, you're probably not gonna put in a full 10-barrel or greater. I don't even know if you'd put in necessarily like a seven-barrel system in there, but do you kind of see what I'm saying where, like, there's certain elements within the industry that actually make it self-limiting, and so I don't know how much we can regulate that?
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that. I think that's a pretty good idea. Don't forget, Woolly Market has giant basement that they could easily have.
True, true.
Many barrels, and that's what Melvin and Bellingham was doing. They put all their, their multiple-barrel system in the basement, and the upstairs was dining and bar area. So, for, I think that's a great idea. And also keep in mind that, and under the conditional use, the alcohol production establishment will be a conditional use in the central business district. So, it will already go, undergo additional review. But, yeah, if you want to put a bounds on it, like no more than a 10-barrel system, I think you're perfectly within your, your ability to recommend something like that. And you don't need to worry about that kind of, you know, whether it's gonna pass legal muster because after we do our work, we run it by our legal team, and they'll, they'll make comment on that before it makes it to the council.
Okay. And then, just one other thing that I, I wanted to comment and ask on. With, so in the definitions, you have maybe allowed, and then, you know, you have the permitted use in the commercials saying maybe included. I think it's the same language, maybe included, yeah, in the industrial. So, just out of my own curiosity, does that mean that you'd have to get some sort of special permission or permit in order to have that element be part of your establishment?
I'm glad you brought that up, because in the, so what we're talking about is, in the definition of alcohol production establishment, it says, alcohol produce, production establishment means a business involved with manufacturing, bottling, warehousing, and distribution of alcoholic beverages, excluding alcohol-serving establishments, and specifically including breweries, distilleries, and wineries. Food and/or alcoholic beverage service may be allowed accessory to such establishments. So, right there in the definition, we say food and/or alcoholic beverage service may be allowed accessory to such establishments. Thus, it's actually redundant to say it in the industrial zone, the central business district, and the mixed commercial. What we really should be, what we should be able to do in the uses section of the various zones is just say alcohol production establishments. Except with a caveat that alcohol, you like in the central business district, you say alcohol, alcohol production establishments provided that, you know, building floor area not be something over so many square feet. Or same in the mixed commercial, we had drafted, does not exceed 3,000 square feet. Trying to avoid, uh, large manufacturing facilities in the mixed commercial zone. If it's really gonna be that large, we're hoping to push that into the industrial zone, but we wanted to make smaller facilities possible in the mixed commercial zone. So, that's why we put that 3,000 square foot number on it. Planning commission had a debate about that last year, or last year, at our last planning commission meeting. It, it didn't feel like a year ago, it seemed like last week. Can't believe we're here again already so quickly. And there was some discussion about that 3,000 square foot number because there was, I think some of the highlights were, you know, if you're, if you're gonna go through the trouble of creating a brewery facility, you probably want the ability to expand. So, this would really limit companies in, from being able to expand too much in the central business district and in the mixed commercial, which kind of serves the need that we want, because if it's gonna be a big production facility, we, we want that in the industrial zone.
And probably, if they were that successful, they would go there on their own. They would want to move to the industrial and do a bigger thing if they're that successful.
Yeah, I've always been, yeah, I've always been a fan of keeping the, the real details on the definition side, and then making, tailoring things depending on the zone as we go on down to the individual needs of the different zones and cans and cans. So, I, I like what I see here myself. Any, any more comments?
I'd like to jump in here.
Absolutely.
So, I, I missed out on the discussion last month, and to me, the 2,000 feet in the central business district and the 3,000 feet seems a little small. I don't know, like, I think about Asland up in Bellingham. I don't know how much their production, like how many square feet they have devoted towards production, but that would be equivalent to like in our central business district, and that's a facility that fits really well into the downtown. They are producing enough beer that they're selling at other places, you know? I don't know, I don't have any concept of like what their numbers are, or how many, do you have any idea how many barrels they're making, or they have any production?
That, that's a huge, I mean, their, their brew houses scale to be industrial.
Sure, but it, but it fits nicely within the downtown, I, in my opinion, you know? I mean, they do have a big truck out there periodically and stuff, but it's not, you know, creating an, toward impact. And that's a huge economic driver for Belling, I mean, that place is very successful, and... So, I guess, I don't know, I would be interested to know like how many square feet they're using for their production, because it, you know, I think that there's certainly buildings in our central business district. I think of like the old Chevy dealership that's now a stone place or whatever, but has been, you know, largely underutilized. A facility like that certainly could have, you know, I, I don't know how big the shop area is in that place, but that could be 10,000 feet of, that could easily be converted to, you know, brewery production, and I don't think would create an undue impact on the downtown or the central business district. So, I appreciate the desire to keep, you know, an Anheuser-Busch-style brewing facility, or, you know, a Sierra Nevada, or, you know, a giant brewery out of our downtown, but, like Pat mentioned, I think that's gonna be self-regulating to some extent. And, you know, you'd hate to create a situation where a brewery had to move because they, you know, couldn't comply with it, you know, or they wanted to have 3,000 or 4,000 feet of production, even like in the basement of the Woolly Market. I don't know, how many square feet is the?
6,000.
6,000, there you go. So, I mean, if the whole basement of the Woolly Market was involved in brewery production, I, I certainly don't feel like that would create a negative impact on downtown. And so, uh, so there's that, that, that's my point about these square footage restrictions. And then, I, I like the idea of being able to have alcohol and beverage or food service in the industrial zone, in, you know, as an accessory to a brewery in the industrial zone. That is a, that sort of in reverse is something that I would be very, feel very strongly about limiting the, either the size or their percentage of the facility that was devoted to retail food and beverage sales in the industrial zone. I, I feel very strongly about maintaining the industrial zone for industrial purposes, and I do think that there's certainly a benefit to having, you know, if, if a, if a microbrewery or small brewery wants to move into the industrial zone and also have a taproom or some sort of food service situation, I think that's great, but I do think that should be limited in scope as opposed, you know, in comparison to the actual production facility. And I don't know, square footage requirements always seem super arbitrary to me. But this is a place where, you know, I could see potentially, or, or maybe it's a, a percentage of their total facility size or something like that that's devoted to that. So, I'm, I'm more than willing to hear feedback about that, about how to structure that.
So, staff, staff can assist by finding how about, how big Asland is, and seeing if we can find out what percentage of that facility's production versus how much is, you know, the retail, restaurant, commercial part. I think your point about limiting the amount of commercial retail part in the industrial zone is well taken. I think maybe we should discuss the flip side of that, is, you know, in the, in the mixed commercial and central business district, using that same logic, it also makes sense, as you were speaking, it kind of triggered some thoughts, it might make sense to also limit the industrial portion in the commercial, mixed commercial and central business district, i.e., you know, require at least 50% be restaurant and tasting room, or something like that. I'm just making up a number for the, to get the conversation started, and I'm not suggesting any specific numbers. But along the same lines, we want to make sure that if we're allowing breweries and distilleries, wineries in the central business district, that it looks more like a retail facility than an industrial brewing facility.
And that's why Asland is so successful in my mind, because when you drive by on the street, you see the restaurant, and, you know, they do have a big roll-up door, whatever, and some stuff outside, but it's, you know, um, anyway, it doesn't seem like an industrial facility, it seems...
Right, so we just need to make sure, or we craft our code to make it look like that.
Sure. And then, in the converse, in the industrial zone, we don't want somebody opening a seven-barrel brewery to comply with the thing, and then having a 10,000 square foot restaurant in there, or whatever, you know, I mean, maybe that's not the worst thing, but I, I...
There's lots of those in the industrial zones in other cities, so...
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of examples out there, and, you know, as we're having this discussion, especially on the industrial side. Redhook was probably the first really big facility that did that combination of a industrial-style brewery production with a restaurant, plus they had some area for vent, for concert venues and things like that. So, there's definitely examples out there in different jurisdictions that have done this really successfully.
I don't know if that's a good example, they closed to that facility.
No, Pabst bought them. Yeah. Those were the original investors in Redhook, it's too bad.
And, believe it or not, you know, given their size, they were considered a microbrew.
No way, really, wow, yeah.
I'd, I'd like to weigh in since I didn't make the last meeting, and I appreciate all the work that, that you guys did on this last month, and, and in general, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I wanted to touch on two things. One, I'm going to, I want to agree with Eric that we should set up our thing so that it's keyed to the industry's standards, and I don't remember the exact number used, but it was a metric that the people that are trying to build the thing are gonna understand, and therefore, it's easy for them to understand when they're reading the code. And I really like that idea, and also, they probably know what their cutoff is for when they have to build a bigger facility, you know, or when the scale of production is enough that they, now it's time to jump up to a bigger facility. We gotta move out to the industrial from, from the downtown location or whatever, or open a bigger one, and just keep this as our taproom or whatever, so... So, anyway, I wanted to agree with Eric on that. And then, in my reading of it, I, I didn't, maybe, I keep hearing you guys talk about retail, but I didn't remember seeing retail in there. And all of these businesses, you know, have all their, you know, hats, shirts, books, mugs, glasses, you know, all the stuff that goes along with it, with the thing, and that's a lot of their sales, you know? People come in, they want to, they want to see the thing, have a drink, and then they want to buy a shirt or a hat, or, or a book about their brewing process or something like that, or recipes. So, anyway, I want to make sure that that's in there because that would be a big part of their, their revenue and the draw for, for people to come in.
Currently, industrial zone allows up to 5% of the overall site for those kinds of things, so that should cover, you know, that small retail portion.
So, we don't have to add specific language.
That's usually like a room in the corner or something, right? It's, it's small compared to like the restaurant part, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, restaurants and tasting rooms were, were possible.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't preclude them from, from doing that, because I think that's a...
No, that's not the intent. We can, we'll look into that just to make sure, but that, that wasn't the intent to exclude that kind of stuff, because you're right, that, that just comes with the meal.
Yeah, yeah, that's, pardon me. Okay, well, thank you guys for working so hard on it last month, and, and that's my two cents worth to add to it.
And that naturally leads into what I was going to say, considering the focus in the August staff report on that percent retail, I... That percent retail, I wondered when I saw this one, that, um, item number six under industrial was left the same. And just wanted to clarify that we didn't need some clarification, um, in item number 11 with alcohol to. Now that I've heard what Silas has to say, not saying we have to massively increase the percentage, but you had pointed out that 5% was very small. Um, for that sort of thing, and, um, I mean, if, if we're wanting it to just be very incidental. Um, I don't know, but maybe increasing that a little bit to, um, or just making it be. Some, some other way of making it be subsidiary to the primary function, which is obviously, you know, a.
You know what I can do is, so, um, in the industrial zone, Commissioner Freiberger's talking about number six.
Yes.
Which is existing and hasn't changed, and that's what I was just referring to when I was responding to, uh, Commissioner Huggins. Says of the allowed uses, limited retail and service uses up to 5% of the total site. So what I'm understanding Commissioner Freiberger is saying is like, so how does this new number 11 that we're writing? Play with that number six, does it, does it get confused? So we could say, um, we could leave that limited retail and service uses up to 5%. Um, and add, except alcohol, um, production establishments. How, you know, except see specific. Uh, ancillary uses allowed for alcohol production establishments.
Just a clarification on that, when it says total site, does that mean like the lot area?
That's the way I interpret it, yes.
So, I mean, that's still could be pretty significant, cause that's including parking lots and whatever, right?
It, it could, but, um, it, it was still very limiting on, um. Dining facilities, which in restaurant, and you know, like, when you have a restaurant as part of your brewery.
Sure.
It, it's very limiting, cause the, between the, the, the kitchen and then the dining area, it gets pretty big, and then where do you? Where do you draw, where do you draw the line for parking, right, you know, is all that parking now part of the retail, or is that parking that you? Cause say you have 1,000 square foot restaurant, now you gotta provide, what is that, like 75 parking spaces or some ridiculous amount?
Or 1,000 square foot restaurant?
Well, it's 75 per square foot of area open to the public, so, I don't know, just kind of throwing numbers out there, it would be a lot of parking for, for something like that, what's?
And you said this room is 2,000 square feet?
About, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, say you've got, say you've got 1,000 square foot that's open to the public, that's not restrooms, that's like the dining bar area. And it's 70, divide that by 75, oh, I guess it's only 13 parking spaces, but.
Yeah, that sounds more realistic.
We're planners, we don't do math on the fly. So say, you know.
But still, it's like.
Does that additional 13 parking spaces count towards the retail percentage of the site, or they could just, it gets a little muddy.
So we need to clarify that, but there, it seems to me that a percentage of. The facility, which would be different than the total site, right?
Mm-hmm.
Like if, if you were talking about their, the square footage of the building, or the buildings and, you know, plural. The restaurant portion that's open to the public could be 25% of that. Or 30% or 50% or whatever the number is, I don't know.
That's a, that, that's exactly the number that I think we're, the planning commission is trying to arrive at.
Sure.
Through this discussion, what is reasonable?
But if there's a 10,000 square foot production facility in the industrial portion. Then at 25%, they could have a 2,500 square foot. Open to the public restaurant, that doesn't include the kitchen or the, you said it does include the bathrooms or not include the bathrooms?
Well, for parking purposes, it wouldn't, but like the re, the kitchen would be part of the, the retail, it would be part of that limited scope. Cause the business, the industrial business is the brewing. The retail, commercial aspect would be the cooking, the seating, bathrooms for the patrons, and then any outdoor play areas if you've got. Outdoor seating and.
Outdoor seating would count towards that as well.
Yeah, cause that's, that's not part of the industrial facility, right, that's part of your.
No, no.
That's part of the, the retail aspect, so we're trying to allow for these things in the, the industrial zone. And re, and make it possible, because 5% is totally limiting, now you're seeing like. All of the things that add up to the recreation, or the, uh, the retail part, it can balloon over 5% pretty quick.
So here's a question in what I'm hearing here, so back to the CBD and the MC zones. It sounds like it's more sensible to look at a percentage of square footage for the production activities. And the Woolly Market was an example where the basement's 6,000 square feet, is that more sensible, instead of putting in arbitrary numbers, 3,000, 2,000? To actually be very site-specific and say, okay, it could be limited to production this X amount, but not to exceed. Some unreasonable amount that's better left for, uh, the industrial site, it's just a thought, cause we're, we're talking percentages here. Instead of specificity on, uh, square footage, that's just some of my thoughts here, cause every building's gonna be different, alright, so.
I think what I was hearing from, uh, Commissioner Maddox is that it just needs to be, and, and I feel this way too, it, it should. Represent whatever the primary function of the zone is, but, um, as we have done with other things. Like live work units or whatever, you know, you know, mixed commercial, anything like that, you just have to have the primary thing be whatever the main. Um, goal of the zone is, and then, so I don't know if we wanted to go 60, 40, or. You know, no more than, you know, so that it's obviously, and maybe have some controls for how it presents. On the street-facing side, I, I don't know, but.
So staff doesn't really have any strong recommendations, um, all of your discussion here is going to guide what we do. Um, we're, we're happy to, to put it anyway, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to keep all the, the thought process in a line. I think you guys are going in a great direction, it almost sounds like you've got it figured out, now it's just coming down to. What percentages in each zone are you comfortable with that you think would be reasonable?
So, I mean, I get the percentage argument, and I'm not opposed to that, and I think it's a lot. Better and more flexible than like literal square footage, but we are dealing with. Spes- a specific industry, and so it, in my mind, I, I would more advocate for, you know. Basing things more off of industrial standards, because they're gonna be self-limiting, um, unto themselves, like I. I, I'm probably gonna, while we're discussing this, I'm, I've kind of made notes to myself to kind of research also distillery and wineries. Because, you know, I, I don't know if it's a true apples-to-apples, like I, I don't know how. Those production systems work and what their footprints are, but, you know, knowing, having done research into the brewery aspect of it. You know, the, the footprint doesn't necessarily have to be that big, and you can also. I mean, one of the things that a lot of these breweries do is also kind of intermix. Um, you know, the industrial with the, the retail tasting, eating establishment, I mean, that, that's kind of. Part of the shtick and the feel is, you know, drinking and enjoying a brew within the facility itself, and I know that. And you're not always like directly in the brew house, but like with, um, you know, you know, different. Not just the, the brew house themselves, but, um, you know, within the. You know, the ingredients and the barrels and the fermenters and that sort of thing, you know, that, that can. Kind of be part of the shtick, and so you're not like just necessarily gonna have like a, an Asland where it's like a very delineated. This is the tasting room, this is the brew house, you can see it, but it's an arm's length away. Um, you know, there's kind of room for creativity with that, and so I would advocate more for, you know, limiting. Particularly with the, with the mixed commercial and the, the, uh, central business district, I, I think. Um, Commissioner Maddox's point is well-taken as far as the industrial, you know. I can see where, you know, industrial should kind of keep within its nature, uh, being industrial, especially since it's. Kind of limited in the amount of what we have here in town, um, but maybe be a little bit more open to the. Industrial standards and basing what exactly the, cause I mean, the, the whole point of us limiting the, the 2,000 and the 3,000. Was we were trying to keep it from getting too Budweiser-y, you know, we were trying to keep it tampered down a little bit, and I think you can do that. Within the, the production facility parameters themselves, instead of specific percentages.
The, um, I, I don't know a lot about the brewing business, but I've been to a few of them, and it seems like it's built, and I don't know what the exact term is either, but it's like. I mean, I've been in one kettle ones where they have one distilling kettle or whatever it's called, and that, you know, they do the math and they know, and you could probably fit one of those in a live work unit. In the, in the downstairs of one of Silas's, um, live, live works here across the street, and, um, if it was legal. And, um, but like a two kettle or a three kettle, I've seen up to, uh, five kettles in a, in a place. Uh, about the size of, uh, the, um, of the Woolly Market down there, that's a pretty good sized, uh, unit. But I think that's how they figure it out, is, you know, what can I brew in a kettle, and how much, how much beer does that make, how much of that can I sell? Can I, can I make that pay, or do I need two kettles to make it pay or whatever, so I think that's the way you, you know, basically the buildings are gonna. The limits, the buildings that are available in downtown or the lot sizes that they can get are gonna determine what, um, how big they're gonna be. Um, before they have to go out to the industrial, I guess is, is what I'm thinking, cause our lots are pretty small. But I suppose you have to have some kind of a safety number, so they don't like buy up eight buildings and put in a brewery, but I can't imagine them doing that.
No, it's based on the floor area, not necessarily the lot size, so let's say you go up three stories and you have different floors with, uh, production facilities.
Well, I, I guess I was thinking mostly about the CBD and the, yeah, I guess you, you could build from scratch in a, in the mixed commercial, but, uh. Anyway, I'm just saying, I think that's how the industry looks at it, is that, um, how much beer can I produce in a kettle in a year and is, and can I pay for the rent for this building and, um. And then how much retail and stuff do I have to do to, to make it pay too, so, anyway. Um, but I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm leaning the way Eric's saying that you have to use the industry standard. Um, and then have some kind of a square footage cutoff maybe at some point.
I was actually gonna ask Commissioner Johnson if you thought some sort of combination would work to kind of, I mean, obviously it makes sense, um, to, you know, if you. To use the industry standard and limit it, especially in the, the mixed commercial, but then also kind of speak to. How much of that, I mean, you know, the kind of, how much of the space can be for brewing and how much can be for? Cause limiting it to barrels is one thing, I feel, but then also restaurant space and retail space, how do you kind of show, show what's preferred? In that way.
There's three different calculations here too, it's not just the, the brewery, uh, aspect of it, you got wineries and distilleries. And I could think of different examples of businesses that are, that are ongoing right now out in the Woodinville area, and I, I keep saying that just simply for the fact I'm familiar with that area. So your distillery, uh, standards are gonna be different than your brewery standards, different than your winery standards, so does it make sense? To approach each of them differently and potentially based upon the use, have different square footage, uh, ratios. Depending on exactly what they're doing. That's just a thought.
Can I jump in here?
Absolutely.
Um, all of these points are well-taken, I think, uh, but to your point, Commissioner Fatisi, um. I'm, I'm just gonna stick by the percentage of, you know, area calculation as the cleanest way to deal with this, because. Uh, like you're saying, there's, you know, distilleries, wineries, breweries, they all have their own industrial standards for their production. Uh, you might find a situation like Terramar out in Edison that is a distillery and a brewery. And somebody might decide they also want to make wine, and industry cha- standards change sometimes rapidly, sometimes at a snail's pace, but they. Industry standards are changing constantly, and so if we can come up with a percentage and, um. I could see a tiered system where in the central business district, say 60% has to be. Uh, retail food and beverage, you know, or, uh, and 40% can be production, or I. But I think about the Woolly Market as an example, if you have the entire basement devoted to production, that's 50%. Essentially of the floor space, right, there is the mezzanine, but whether or not that's open to the public is. So, so I don't know, maybe 50% is the number, where at least half of it has to be retail, and then there's. Just some caveats that the street appearance to, uh, Commissioner Freiberger's point, uh, you know, has to maintain sort of a. Public, you know, commercial facade as opposed to an industrial production facade in, in those zones, and then. In the industrial zone, I think it's, you know, maybe the percentage is 40% can be. Retail food and beverage sales, and because I, getting into the outside seating, if that's counted into it. All of a sudden, I mean, it'd be super easy to have 2,000 feet of outside seating or 5,000 feet of outside seating. That had minimal impact on, you know, the, I, I, I don't know, you, you could rapidly escalate, and I don't think we want to try to discourage that. You know, I think that, uh, outside beer gardens in the summertime are really great and, um, you know, certainly, uh. Economic driver, a potential economic driver, and so, um, but I, you know, I think that we could get bogged down in like. How many barrels is this certain place producing, but then maybe they take out one of the barrels and put in a wine thing and. The whole calculation gets screwed up, and so. I feel that, uh, having just a very clear percentage based on the two separate uses, um. And whatever that, you know, I think that we might have some, a little bit of work to do to hammer out that exact number. Just makes it the cleanest, makes it the easiest for the planning department, makes it very easy for a developer coming in and saying, we have a 5,000 square foot building. We can have 2,500 square feet for production, we can have 2,500 square feet for restaurant retail. Or, you know, maybe we can have 3,000 square feet for restaurant retail and 2,000 square feet for production, and. Can we squeeze five kettles into that, I don't care how many kettles you squeeze into there.
So let me ask this, so we're talking specifically about the production space, so in essence, let's say we use a 50/50 formula. That the production space can't exceed 50% of the, uh, usable floor area, whatever we, uh, come up with. That does not mean that if somebody wants to use 70% of it for the retail side and just keep 30% of, even though they can do 50. For the production side, that, 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 that's an okay thing.
In the mixed commercial and the CBD, right?
Yeah.
But then it's flipped in the industrial side, where you can go up to.
Okay.
Whatever for your retail, you know.
Just want that specificity in there, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, so just being devil's advocate, so what happens when you, um, are in the retail and you have, um, only 40% production? And, uh, 60% retail, but your production is bringing in more money than your retail, are we doing this on the money, or are we doing this on, just on square? But your production is bringing in more money than your retail. Are we doing this on the money? Are we doing this on, just on square footage? Just square footage, okay. Okay. Well, that's fine with me. I just was clarifying because you could easily make more on your retail than on your, and then on your, uh, than on your, your production.
Clearly you're gonna lose a lot of money on retail.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So, you know, think of it from the, the perspective of, you know, why we do planning in the central business district, for example. We want people coming into that area, creating a lively area. So if, if the facility is forty percent production and sixty percent commercial, but they're making ten times as much money on the production, good for them. The, the idea is we're, we're getting people, you know, the, the city is trying to encourage liveliness in the downtown. So as long as there's that commercial space available. So as you're thinking about this, you know, maybe, maybe we throw in something like front-facing, like, you know, commercial, like facing the street a certain percentage, uh, because that's really the, the idea is we want it to look like, when it's in the commercial area, we want it to, to look like commercial and not industrial. Um, so we don't want to get caught in a situation where somebody wants to put their half of their, for whatever, you know, logistic reasons, they want to put half of their production facility facing Metcalf.
Right.
Again, playing a bit of devil's advocate, right? Um, maybe, maybe it makes sense to have a little display, right?
Sure.
You know, get people like, oh, that's, that's a brewery or a distillery, like, oh, let's go in there.
And that's easy stuff to put into.
Like I think Icicle did that in, uh, in Leavenworth. I don't know if they're still in business, but they had the, they had one of their cookers or kettles or right in the front window where you could see it. So you knew walking down the street that it was, um, a taproom.
But you don't necessarily want it to be all front-facing. So
Right.
If the planning commission feels that we need to go down that road, that's also a consideration. Maybe we try to wrap our heads around.
That's actually what, um, the new, uh, restaurant brewery in La Conner is doing. They have a big kettle right out in front, so you know we're a big barrel, uh, what it is, but the, the building itself looks very, I would say it looks more, well, it was the old fire hall, so it's kind of a repurposed building anyway, but, um, you know, more commercial and it's obviously a restaurant when you go in, um, you know, and then I remember when we went up to, uh, tour the breweries in Bellingham a few years ago, and you mentioned Menace at the last meeting, I believe. That was the one that was a converted garage, you said. And, and to someone's point, you know, the percentages, I don't know how the developer would calculate it. I guess it's on them to do that, but that nothing precludes them from having the barrels in where people are seated to give it that brewery sort of feel. I believe that's how that was. You saw them right there when you went in.
Yeah, they probably only had twenty-five percent of their facility to, it was, it was two barrels sitting in the back of the room with the, with a, a little chain across the front that they could move away when they're bringing forklifts in to like
Yeah.
bring materials and stuff. Um, so from a brewery perspective, it also often blurs the lines between what's, what's the commercial and what's, what's the production and what's the, the, the seating area because during the hours that they're not open to the public, they're using that seating area as industrial, you know, moving things back and forth and, uh, that kind of stuff.
Right. And, and actually, I mean, that's, that's part of the ambiance of it, right? I mean, that's why you're going there. You want to be in the taproom. I mean, you want to be in the production facility. That's, that's why you, you go there. You want it fresh from the barrel from the thing. And you might want to see the machines in the background doing the thing. So, um, so it is gonna get mixed if they're providing a good experience for the customer.
Wander's a good example of that. Wander Brewing in Bellingham.
I, I just recall to the point of Menace that, um, it was, felt very industrial and I personally wouldn't think that that would be something you'd want facing, at least the facade of it on, you know, you know, like on Metcalf or something like that, you know, make it a look a little bit more.
John, you know, is Wander in the industrial zone? Is that industrial?
I feel like it must be.
I mean, it's like in that kind of industrial park area, right?
It, it almost has to be.
Yeah.
Cause everything around it feels very warehouse-like. You know, there's the overhead door company across the, the alley from them and just it, it, it feels like that kind of, but it's kind of a mix because it's so close to downtown. I actually don't know the zoning there. But it was clearly like a boat manufacturing building or something. There's got, I think like a five thousand pound crane. The rails across that have like, uh, like a chain hoist that they would move engines or boats or something around and it's very industrial looking.
Oh, yeah. That, that one was an old boat, you know, building, um, if that's the one I'm thinking of, they, they told us that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So you could do, you could do something really neat just down the street here where, um, where the parking lot is for the old, um, Scotty Steel office, uh, there. If you took a chunk of that, you could, it would be on industrial land and facing the main street of, uh, the institute of town. You could really do something interesting there. Being in the industrial zone, you could, you could do all that stuff, so. Yeah, cool.
I think the actual, that building might be in the CBD.
It is. It's on the other side of the railroad tracks is the industrial zone.
Yeah, I think so.
But still, that would be a great place for a brewery, brew pub.
I'm excited that the planning commission's really like seeing all the nuances to this. And this is a very encouraging conversation.
I'm a big fan of this proposal. Absolutely. I, I think it's great.
So can we, um, I feel like, uh, we need to maybe some like real life examples or like to have an idea of like square footages per, or like versus production, you know, uh, restaurant versus production of some, uh, facilities that we might be familiar with or at least could go make ourselves familiar with. To try to put, you know, I've been a fan of a field trip myself.
No, no, I am not, I am not taking the planning commission on a field trip to alcohol establishments.
You're driving the bus, right?
I'm, I'm gonna leave it up to you to, to do that. That's not gonna be a city sponsored activity.
Sure, we could do independent research.
Independent research, yes. Independent study in college.
I mean, I think about like Farm Strong, that seems pretty industrial down there, but it also might be mixed commercial. I'm not sure exactly what the zoning is of that place, but
We'll look into it.
They, they certainly are much more uh, production square footage than taproom square footage, I think.
That would
But they also kind of have a really big room in there.
And a big outdoor area.
And a big outdoor area. And so if the outdoor area counts towards it, anyway, it'd be interesting.
It's a little, it gets a little blurry.
It does. Very blurry. So.
Well, we'll chase down that lead of the, the percentage possibilities and, you know, hey, maybe, maybe we discover it gets too blurry and we, we can't regulate it like that or it gets too tricky, um, and we, we go down another path. We're having the conversation, um, to figure out what the planning commission feels about.
Do we have examples of how other municipalities regulate this?
No. I'm looking into Woodinville for wineries.
Sure.
Kenmore for breweries.
You know, a lot of this started, you know, when these microbrews, true microbrews started, they, um, they, they were having, they were being required to be in the industrial zone and then having to get conditional use permits in order to have restaurant parts to them. And I think other jurisdictions have probably reacted to that.
To their success.
To their success. So we could, we could look at what Bellingham's looks like. And Woodinville. Anywhere else that you would suggest?
Kenmore for breweries, they have, uh, all on Bothell Everett Highway there. They call it Brewery Row. You have one ninety-sixth.
And that's in Kenmore?
Yeah.
Even though it's on Bothell Highway?
Yeah. It's actually
All that just kind of blurs together.
A couple of other municipalities, Prosser and Tumwater. Maybe good suggestions.
Prosser is probably gonna be pretty loosey-goosey.
Well, I, I was talking with Charlie about that and he, he recommended that we look into Prosser and Tumwater specifically.
All right.
Would, um, Leavenworth
Yeah.
be, or is that too unique?
Might be too unique. I can only think of Icicle down there too.
Okay.
That's the only one I'm aware of.
And a bunch of wine shops now. It's half of the town downtown is wine tasting rooms now.
Tasting rooms?
Yeah.
Well, you know, you could open a tasting room in our downtown right now, no problem.
Yeah.
If it's just a tasting room. And it's not the, the
Not the production.
The production facility as well, right? And that's a whole different area that, you know, we're not regulating. We don't want tasting rooms, just straight up tasting rooms without production in the industrial zone. Do we want them in the mixed commercial and CBD? Heck, yeah, bring it on.
But that's already a permitted use.
That's already a permitted use, so we don't need to worry about that.
Yeah.
We're just taking in the gray area. So I feel like we've had a, a lot of conversation and the planning commission seems to be collectively scratching their head at the moment, so uh, we'll bring some information back and we'll see if we can't, uh, take a run at putting something together that sounds like what the planning commission's been talking about. Don't hold us to that because it seems like we don't have a, a whole lot of great direction at the moment. Um, but percentages, we can, we can maybe take a run at some percentages in each of those jurisdictions, each of those zones.
So that's back to your proposal of any recommended changes. So modifying it from an actual square footage percentage, square footage amount to a percentage, I, I think that, that's been a pretty effective conversation tonight.
That's definitely something that I
Yeah.
picked up on. Um, and I think, you know, off the top of my head, what I would think right now is if it's gonna be CBD, I'd say like seventy-five percent retail, commercial and twenty-five proj- proj- production. In the industrial, probably fifty-fifty. And mixed commercial, I don't know, what do you guys think? Sixty, forty or fifty-fifty?
I think fifty-fifty is kind of, I mean, minimum fifty percent retail, right? And then the industrial is the opposite. Maximum fifty percent retail.
But you know, that's a safe number right off the bat because if you say fifty-fifty, it doesn't mean that you can't expand into the production side with the retail side.
Right.
So.
But
So, yeah, that, yeah, I like that. Like minimum fifty percent commercial. Instead of fifty-fifty, just say minimum fifty percent commercial in this, in the mixed commercial. In the industrial, minimum
Fifty percent production.
Yeah, I like that too. That's, that gives wiggle room for design.
I like that a lot. I, that actually, that actually might get us there, actually. And CBD, how did you feel about, um, minimum seventy-five percent?
I get your point. Is that
Is that too much?
That's foot traffic and
I think that's too much. I think maybe minimum sixty percent or something or, or even this fifty-fifty, like, I mean, to the point that like a lot of the spaces are small, but I don't know. I think that if there's a, a brew pub in the CBD that has fifty percent retail or like, you know, food and beverage sales and has the caveat of like good street presence, that's a win for Cedro Woolly.
Yeah.
You know, um, as opposed, you know, and, and then if it's sixty or seventy-five, it ends up only, they only having two barrels or whatever. And it's seventy-five percent, you know, food service, that's an even bigger win, but, you know.
And I, you know what? I'm also gonna address seventy-five percent street-facing must be some sort of retail.
I think that's, I think that's more important or the, you know, the important part of that.
To, I'll cook up something, but to, to look retail.
Look retail.
How, uh, how dead is this horse?
What else we got on our agenda tonight?
So we, uh, the last, is the, the last thing on the agenda is the, the new business.
So we do have another memo addressing the new business and it's a request of amendments to the ADU regulations in seventeen-one-hundred. And there is a memo that, uh, we have.
You want me to go over it?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry. I was trying to pull it up.
All right. So I'm gonna start from the beginning on this one. So the planning commission, I think it was just back in two thousand, I was, uh, was, or twenty-twenty, sorry. When the planning commission and the city, well, the city passed the accessory dwelling unit regulations. The, I think everybody on the current planning commission was part of that discussion, so you remember the amount of detail that went into it. Of course, you know, we discovered a wrinkle, you know, took us two years. With the market shifting and houses not selling before spec houses could, you know, before spec builders could actually even build them. Now there's, you know, some concern in the spec building industry that they want to be able to offer different products to, you know, to entice people to buy spec homes. Now by spec home, I'll, I'll describe, that means a house built on speculation. So that's when, uh, builders are building multiple houses, they're not building a house specifically for somebody who's approached them and said, I'd like, I'd like you to build me this house with these plans. What, what they're doing is, you know, they're building a subdivision and they're building houses. They provide the plans. They call, they're, they're just guessing what people are gonna want. This is what you see our larger subdivisions are doing. And those builders then, as they're being built, people see that there's houses for sale and they come in and they say, oh, you know, how can I, I'd like to buy one of your houses. I'd like this plan and like on that lot if possible and, you know, here are some of the little finishing touches, but largely it's just the developer is telling how the house is going to be built. And they're doing that, putting the money ahead of time on their own. So that's, that's building on spec. So what does that have to do with our ADUs? The, uh, the ADUs, the way we designed this, uh, the, the ADU regulations was very much retrofit. So when you, when we were designing this whole time, we were thinking, okay, someone has an existing house somewhere and they want an ADU. We did not think, what if somebody's building a new house and they want to include an ADU with it? Now, if you think about the way our rules are, they say that you have to be, uh, owner of the property in order to get to the accessory dwelling unit permit. And you need the accessory dwelling unit permit before you can apply for a building permit to actually construct the ADU. That's all well and good if you own the property and you're like, okay, I want to convert my garage or I want to build a small ADU in the back or convert the back half of my house, whatever, into an ADU. Process works great. We've probably done about five of them since then, probably five or six. Starting to pick up a little steam here. It's not going, it's not gangbusters, but it's starting to pick up a little steam. This doesn't work for the spec builders because the spec builders own the property. And since they have no intention to live on the site, you know, they're just building them for, to suit to somebody who's gonna build it or buy it. And since they have no intention to live on the site, you know, they're just building them for, to suit to somebody who's going to build it, or buy it. They can't apply for the ADU permit in order to be allowed to have an ADU, so way the code is written, spec buildings can't have ADUs. You would have to sell the house and then the new owner would have to apply for the ADU permit and then apply for a building permit. What does the planning commission think about that situation? Because we received, and it's in your memo, a request from BYK. I think the local planning commissioners are aware of BYK Construction, they're a local developer. And they, they design and build plats and then design and build the homes on it. They requested to be able to build ADUs into their spec homes. And, you know, having a conversation with them, like, okay, no, we can't do that. Our code does not, does not allow it. So I asked them to apply for a, apply for a code change and that allows us to go through the process of talking to the planning commission and then having the planning commission make some recommendations and then bring it to city council and what they think now. Fully aware of sort of the baggage that goes with ADUs and, you know, we're all painfully aware of the discussion that we had for quite some time and eventually got through a product that I think the planning commission was actually very happy with. So I'm sorry to bring this code back to you because I know you were pretty happy with it with this new wrinkle, but, you know, it's, I think it's a worthy discussion. There's some, you know, when you think about it, think about what people don't like about ADUs is they don't like their neighbors to have them mostly, right? And then the impacts of it. So we designed, the planning commission designed the ADU rules to address those impacts. I was kind of thinking about it in this process and I wrote in the memo is, hey, say you're building a new development, going into it knowing that you're going to have accessory dwelling units into it. That really gives you the freedom and ability to regulate what they look like from the get-go. And instead of, you know, modifying an existing lot to put an ADU on it, which could have drawbacks, you have the ability now as part of a new development, say, okay, if you're going to allow ADUs, here's our, here's our great little rules to address all of our concerns. And you do it right up ahead as you design everything on that lot and even in the plat, maybe. It's kind of an opportunity. It also addresses one of the factors of, say you're buying in a neighborhood, a spec-built neighborhood, it'll be right there for everybody to see, like, oh, yeah, there's going to be ADUs on a certain percentage of these lots, or all of these lots, or whatever the planning commission decides to recommend. So when you're buying in that neighborhood, you have the opportunity to know that this is what it's going to be like and not, you know, you're not a neighbor who's lived in a, in a property for twenty years and then you find out your neighbor next door is going to build an ADU and you don't want that. It's a very different mindset for the property owners and the buyers of the property. Whether or not the planning commission agrees with any of these arguments, I just wanted to get them out there because they make for an interesting discussion, more or less. Staff doesn't really have any recommendations on this right now. And we haven't proposed any code language. What you have in your packet is the request from the ADU, from the applicant. And they put in a one-page recommended added language, which I think is going to need to be changed. This is sort of, it's more like the concept put in there. We'd have to, we'd have to change that significantly to make it work within our code. And staff hasn't done anything like that. We wanted to bring it to the planning commission to see if see if this idea has any legs at all before putting a whole lot of work into it. And then if so, hey, let's have a conversation. And we'll work towards crafting some actual code language that we can bring to the planning commission to review and eventually, of course, have a public hearing on, but that's obviously not tonight.
Can I start?
Go for it.
I think it's a no-brainer. I think that, well, first of all, as I was during this original ADU discussion, I absolutely hate the ownership occupancy requirement. But I do believe that ADU should absolutely be allowed as part of spec projects. I think it adds diversity to the housing supply and is one step that we can take to make affordable housing and varied housing options available to more people. And it's, I think it's, you know, irresponsible in the state, you know, in the world that we live in currently to not allow it. And it seems like this concept of added language that BYK proposes seems to generally comply with the intent of our ADU code as it exists, but offer this caveat for, you know, spec-built homes. I also, as somebody who helped to build a couple projects down in Shoreline that were spec projects that included single-family homes with detached ADUs, it's incredibly hard for builders to get paid adequately for the ADUs on top of it. And so I don't think that it's going to be, like, I, I, there's not going to be like a huge number of these things getting done. I mean, an ADU adds, back then it added like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty grand to the cost of a house, which that number's probably higher now. Maybe not in the way that, you know, in the tract home styles that these builders are doing, but it's even in their tract home styles, it's going to add like a hundred and twenty grand to a house. And so it's not, that's a hard sell.
So what you're saying is, even if we allow this, kind of like builders do it, it's going to add like a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the cost to actually build that?
To the sale price of the house, like, let's say.
To the sale price of the house, does it add that same amount?
Well, that's what it needs to add, to be profitable for the builder.
I guess that's what I'm getting at. Is it profitable? Because I actually have heard someone say, I've heard a discussion about this in just in other discussions with people not in the city, that if you build an ADU and it costs, say, a hundred thousand dollars to build, but there's some debate about whether or not it actually increases the value of the overall property by about a hundred.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying, is that like, you know, my mom built several projects with ADUs and they were, it was super hard to get paid for those. Like the addition, for what it costs to build them with the additional impact fees and everything else, it was really hard to find buyers that recognized the value of that thing. And so I think it should absolutely be allowed, but I don't think we need to wring our hands about every new spec home being built with an ADU because that's just simply not going to happen.
So just to add in to the value aspect of it from a real estate perspective, and first of all, I don't see any difference between new construction with an ADU and what we have existing. It's pretty much the same and the language, right, just needs to be cleaned up. So what the lender will do, depending on the size of the unit and what the market rate, the rental rate is going for, they will include that as part of the loan package. And whoever buys the property, they'll take a look at what the income potential is for that ADU and they'll base the loan on what that income is, as well as what the original borrower is bringing to the table. So there is a number that works, definitely, but I don't see any difference between new construction versus existing if we already have it in the code. So I don't, I don't see any major modification outside of the proposed language here that needs to be cleaned up. You're right, it's more conceptual, but we already have it in the code now, so. Might as well know it upfront and lenders absolutely take that into consideration when they're financing a property. Go for it.
I'll go next, yeah. Okay, so I disagree with a lot of that. I was the one person who voted no on the ADUs, more because the state was cramming it down our throat basically than because of the work we did. I thought you guys did an, did an amazing job on that, but I still just see this as an upzone in the thing. You're taking seven, an R-seven or an R-five and you're making it so it's a R-fourteen instead of a or an R-twelve or whatever, so you're, or an R-ten, sorry. So if everyone does, I also, knowing developers will find a way and they will build whole divisions where every one of them is a, has an ADU on it. And because it does pencil out in the end, I would do it in a second if I was a builder because you always know the rent's going to rise and you're going to, you're going to make enough money to, to probably make your house payment with it. So anyway, there's those two reasons. And then the one that I'm really worried about is that in neighborhoods where they don't, so if we, if we don't want to allow every house in a division to have an ADU in the back and you limit the number, then when somebody really needs an ADU in their backyard, say for a mother-in-law unit or whatnot, and you've maxed, the developers have maxed out the, the number of ADUs you can put in that neighborhood, that locks out people who just need one from doing that in their yard, okay? So you've locked out the people who own the house already and want to do the thing. So for those reasons, and I can go into more detail later if you guys want to, for that reason, I would only do this if the developer can only do it with a pre-sale. So they basically, John was describing where a developer specs the house and he has it out there and then you go and look at the house and the ADU and say, oh, yeah, I want to buy that. I'm saying that the only time I would, I would, the only way I'd vote for this is if the person who's buying initiates the idea of the thing, so say like, I would like to buy one of your lots that's for, designed for an ADU with an ADU on it. And that would be the only way it could be done, not just specked out so that the whole neighborhoods are spec houses with an ADU. Does everybody understand what I'm, the point I'm making?
I follow you.
Yeah, I totally follow you.
I think that would be tough for us to tell how houses can be sold like that, although.
Well, you said they have plans.
My understanding of how spec homes are sold, that's probably what they would. It'd be like the third car option.
So you'd put so many lots in.
It would be an ADU option. And I apologize that nobody from BYK is here. I, they were having, they were unable to make it apparently. But they'll be, they'll be at the next discussion, I'm very confident, and so we, I think that's a great question to pose to them.
Yeah, because otherwise they're just going to, they're just going to buy up land and, and that's zoned R-seven and put fourteen houses on it and and they're going to make a killing and the person who can afford to buy that house with the extra hundred and twenty thousand dollars of value on it will get the, will have a nice rental that they can probably end up eventually paying their house payment with. And that doesn't include people who are low income, who, who want those units, so I don't see a gain for the community. And it creates all of the, all of the unintended consequences that come down the road of not enough space for kids to play in the yards, parking issues, all kinds of, all kinds of troubles down the road that this kind of building creates. And we see it in, all you got to do is go on Capitol Hill and other places in Seattle and you'll, you'll know what I'm talking about. So anyway, that's my point of view and that's all.
That's a great question, too, but typically the way I've seen things like that work, there are upgrades. Even though it's a spec home, this is the floor plan, well, here's your upgrade on your cabinets, here's your upgrade on your flooring. Let's say you have a retired couple that's buying one of those homes and they're like, okay, well, we can assist our income by having an ADU. They don't have kids and stuff like that, but those are the questions to ask BYK when they come here next time.
The problem is that the way BYK has written their little thing here is that they could, although you're all saying that they won't.
I'm not saying anything.
That on, they could buy a piece of land, parcel it up and put an ADU on every single lot and spec it out in advance. Will they?
Let's ask them.
I don't know, but it's kind of like the thing we were talking about with the breweries, do we really want that? And, and, you know, how are we going to? Do we really want an upzone in the neighborhood?
Thanks. Anybody else?
So reading back through our existing ADU code, that was something I made a mental note about was that it says that this is not intended to mean there will be an ADU on every lot. And so with this sort of possibility, which I am in favor of taking a look at this, we would definitely need to place limits on the number of ADUs. But I thought Pat brought up a good point about how would we do that so that a developer, you know, didn't maximize that out and then that precludes other people from doing it in a neighborhood? So I think that's a very good question I hadn't thought about. But yeah, this, BYK's little suggestion there is just a start. Definitely a lot of things that would need to be tweaked here, but it's totally doable and I do still think it is in keeping, as Commissioner Manick said, with the intent of the code to consider this.
We don't limit the amount of ADUs in any neighborhood. It just goes strictly, these are the.
No, no, we do not.
Right, yeah.
But it's, but it's owner, it's the people who own the house and have owned the house and decide they want one, doing it, not a speculator just going out there and let's put one on every lot or every other lot and, and because we think that's what's selling right now.
I think it would be easy enough. It sounds like this conversation swirling around the possibility of putting some sort of limitations on the number of ADUs built within a neighborhood by the spec builder, right?
But that would not preclude someone that buys a spec home later on adding an ADU.
That's why I carefully chose my language, saying the ones built by the spec builder. And then if people want to come in and build an ADU later, we don't want to limit that possibility.
Agreed.
Catch that nuance? He's going to write it, so.
And John, this may be extraneous to this, but short-term rentals, are they allowed in ADUs? Okay, I didn't see where it specifies that in here.
It specifically says that short-term rentals are not allowed.
That was the Airbnb conversation, VRBO.
Because that's, well, I assume the developer would be aware of that because and hopefully the buyer would be as well that they can't just put an ADU on there and VRBO it.
Right, and, you know, that is, that would be in our language of any ADU permit that we issue. It is in every ADU permit because we just copy and paste the code into the permit, basically. So they should be well aware. And, you know, it's not really up for the spec builder to, they, they, you know, once somebody moves into the house, they don't care if they paint all of the walls black. You know, they don't care how many people are living in there, you know, they sold the home, they're moving on, they'll warranty it. Probably not the black paint, but, you know. Not saying that they're, they're heartless and don't care about the product once they leave, they definitely warranty it and make sure that their work is done well. But that's where they leave the picture and then it's really up to the homeowner to follow the city rules.
Unless there's an HOA or some sort of covenants placed on the property, as in like all these big developments.
Again, and then that's, yeah, I guess for a while the developer is the HOA until it reaches a critical mass and then it's moved on to the homeowners, you know, after a certain number of lots are sold, then it moves on to the responsibility of actually the homeowners, yeah.
But there's also nothing in the code that prevent, I mean, well, I don't, what happens if a spec builder, like builds a garage with an upstairs that would otherwise be a carriage house, but it's like set up to be an ADU, but is not actually permitted thusly, right? I mean, that, that's totally.
We would rather them actually just call it an ADU instead of build it out to be the bones of an ADU, that someone just has to, you know. that someone just has to, you know, plop a cook stove in and then they've got an ADU.
Yeah.
But they still have to go through the permitting process and everything else to comply to even put it in, even if it was just framed out.
But.
Yeah, but I think what, I think what Commissioner Maddox is getting at is, you can build a, say you build a detached garage with an upstairs area in it and you throw a shower, a bathroom with a shower in it. Okay, how is that different than an ADU? And now you get into a whole area of just compliance issues. Because all it takes is, yeah, someone throws a cook stove in it, now they've got someplace to eat, shower, and sleep, and boom, that, that's an ADU.
Right, and we would rather make the ADU process less onerous so that they actually stay in compliance rather than building.
On the sly.
These things that we're just talking about, whatever you want to call them, where some, where the homeowner then goes in and does that without notifying the city. And then the city doesn't collect the impact fees and the, whatever else is associated with that. They don't have these covenants about the owner occupancy, which I so hate.
And, you know, they don't provide the extra parking and they don't.
Exactly.
Have, you know, the proper fire alarms and venting for the illegal stove that they didn't get permitted for. So, yeah, there's all sorts of reasons why we want people, if they're going to be making a place in ADU, we want them to get a permit so we can make sure it's safe and then, you know, collect any impact fees.
And then this gives you a tool, when they come in with a set of plans, you can say, this looks an awful lot like an ADU, like, right? We need you to comply with this process. And they might say, no, no, it's just a rec room.
The old bonus room over the garage.
I've seen building plans in other jurisdictions where they're just upfront about it. It's, and it's not even detached, it's just, it looks like a single-family house, but it's got two doors in the front. And it, and it's an ADU, just detached. And how is that different than a duplex? I don't really know. But it's an ADU.
Hey, this is a question for you. So if, if, if we had somebody come in and did a detached ADU, what address do you give it?
B.
What is it?
This, the same address as the primary house with the letter B attached.
Oh, okay, so fire, police, they know that it's on the accessory side? That, that was, it was just more of a public safety kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's in the code that we passed in 2020.
Anyone else?
I'm, I'm kind of two minds about ADUs and, and whatnot. I mean, and normally when we've passed an update to the ordinances and someone comes back with something else, I'm usually one to scoff at that idea. I, I'm open to this discussion. You know, as someone who, their practice is built upon landlord-tenant law and as one who does service processing, you know, it's kind of soured me on, on certain kinds of housing, I'll just put it that way. And I, I know what it results in a good chunk of the time. I also know that, you know, there's kind of a, a little bit of an AD, ADU storm coming from the state and there, there's certain individuals in the legislature that would love to cram ADUs down our throats. And I would, I think we should be proactive in a way to try to do what we can to maybe try to stay ahead of that. I know that there's, you know, there's a lot that could go involved with that. But I think, you know, this is a wrinkle within the code that I thought was really good, especially, I mean, I'll disagree with Commissioner Maddox. I, I like the, the homeowner aspect of it, but I think that this is something worth discussing.
And to, to put a note on that, we don't know what, it's going to be proposed in the legislature in the new year. But we do know that there will be more ADU legislation coming, because they've made several tries over the past few years and it hasn't got passed the way the, the majority wanted it to be. So the things that have passed hasn't, they've, they're not where they want to be, so it will be coming back. Doesn't mean we shouldn't move forward with something like this, though. But just so you know, you know, next year, this time, we may be addressing ADUs again for different reasons. Or not, maybe it won't pass again and it'll come back in 2024 again. But I, I don't think it's going away anytime soon.
I think the legislature should just cut to the chase and say, everybody can have a tin shandy and, you know, covering their back, covering, they can have them covering their backyards. I know one guy, I'm not going to say where he lives and what jurisdiction he's in, but he has six or eight sheds. They're just the little, you know, tough sheds from the thing. And he's got them in his backyard and he's renting them out to, to people and, who are in need. I mean, they need them and, and that's what he's doing, so, anyway. It's not our jurisdiction. And that's what it's going to be in the future.
I missed that, right?
I'm the one that has to chase these.
I saw you, I saw you worrying, yeah, it's not, it's not our diction, it's not our jurisdiction. But it is within the county.
It's like, yeah, I missed that one. So anyway, the recommendations here are to discuss proposed amendments, to be prepared and be prepared to request any additional information that be, that may be presented at the next planning commission meeting. Does anybody have anything specific that they would like staff to come back with? That we already haven't discussed? So John, you're good with where we're at and?
Yeah, right on.
So at this point, planning commission discussion information items, none on agenda. Does anybody have anything to add to the good of the order here? Go ahead, sorry.
Uh, don't forget October 1st, Wednesday in October. We have a joint city council, planning commission meeting.
October 5th.
October 5th. What time?
6:00.
Yeah, 16:00.
My wife is out of town that day and I'll be on single dad duty, so there's a high likelihood I won't be present.
It's a public meeting, you can sit in.
Seriously, yeah.
Maybe I'll drag him in, he does.
His wifi works from the here.
He does actually profess to want to come to these occasional.
I, I may also have a soccer match to coach that night, I'm not certain yet and it can change at the last second. So, anyway, but there's the possibility, I, I won't be there, but try my best.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Maddox, second?
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Daniel.
Oh, no, I'm second at one.
I'll give it to Pat.
Second by Commissioner Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? Motion to approve. Aye.
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 Motion to, not approve, done. Motion carries, meeting is closed at 8:07 PM. Thank you, everyone.